Good afternoon, everyone. Today is May 7, 2024. It's 1:00 PM. This is a City of Prescott City Council's study session. I guess we can start off with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Potem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Gambogi is excused from the meeting.
City Clerk, would you like to read our agenda item?
Yes, Mayor. Presentation and discussion regarding land acquisition around the Prescott Regional Airport.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. If I could, give a short intro to this item. Following Council direction, staff has prepared information to share with you in regards to land acquisition around the airport. We will be talking about, mostly about, land in Depot Ranch. We have, as you know, acquired a couple of other portions of land that have currently closed, but there are other pieces of land that are in negotiation. So in this meeting, we'll have airport staff, Kelly Fredericks, our interim airport director, Charlie McDermott from Dibble Engineering, also assist in presenting some information first, and then we'll hear from City Attorney Young on current negotiations and some options for council to discuss. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, Tyler, and good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. I would like to just take a minute and recognize, I always like to acknowledge team members. John Kubrick here is with us, as well as Christina Papa. So we're delighted to be here. I'll just take a couple of minutes, make a couple introductory comments, and then turn it over to Charlie. As you saw in the council packets, we have a few, if you will, brief slides, and then with a lot of backup information. So we intend to keep today's presentation at a high level, but we're certainly prepared to speak at any technical level that you would like to as we move forward. Two items that I would like to point out, just as far as a little bit of clarification, not necessarily that this is more for the general public, not necessarily for City Council. But number one, the land acquisitions are being done for the protection of approach zones. It's not being done for the runway extension project, or so that the runway extension project can advance. Again, protection of approach zones, the only parcel, and we'll talk specifically about it, is the AED property. And that will be dependent, it's still an approach zone protection, but it may be tied into a proposed runway extension depending on the ultimate length that we go with. There may be some navigational equipment. So that's one issue that I wanted, for the public's benefit, to bring out. The other issue that I just wanted to tie into is the runway extension project. Obviously, with any of these activities associated with land acquisition, it does impact our airport budget and our ability to fund other projects. And I simply just want to sensitize City Council as to our process with the Federal Aviation Administration is that we must, on an annual basis, consult with them and submit what's known as our five-year Airport Capital Improvement Plan. And our consultation period begins, we're going to meet with them actually on June 18. I think it's on or around that date. And then we must submit that five-year plan on or before the end of July. And we do that on an annual basis. And the reason I bring that up is timing of these acquisitions, the cost of those acquisitions, can certainly have an impact on our ability to fund projects going forward at the airport. And as we look at strategically how we're going to advance. So direction guidance going forward on these land acquisitions is very, very much appreciated. And I would also just throw in, based on recent, I guess I will say determination, or just understanding that the runway extension project is, in fact, a capacity-related project, we probably can't anticipate as much funding for that project as originally anticipated. So the timing, the amounts of acquisition that we do going forward will have implications from a federal support perspective going forward. Charlie McDermott is going to talk a little bit about the why today, why we're doing what we're doing. And again, we'll address any specific technical details. A little bit of the timing, provide graphics as to what we've done, and a little bit of the budgetary, what we've got under commitment from federal and state grant assistance so far, and what we're hoping to for the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie McDermott, but thank you very much for your time today.
Yeah. It's not green. There you go. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. For the land acquisition, as Kelly mentioned, the question comes up as to why, why acquire the land? As you all know, the City of Prescott is obligated through various grant assurances from the FAA. Specifically, the one that relates to land acquisition is Grant Assurance Number 21. That obligates any airport sponsor to ensure that the land around your airport is compatible and remains compatible for aviation activity. So it's a very important grant assurance. It's a grant assurance that airports across the country deal with on a routine basis, and it certainly is applicable for the City of Prescott. So that's a very important aspect of why the land is proposed to be acquired. The next item we've spoken a lot about over the years is the one-engine inoperative, the departure splay for the current air carrier at the airport. That's a very important surface because that impacts an airline's ability to fully load an aircraft with passenger and freight to get off the ground successfully and safely. So the one-engine inoperative departure splay is applicable on the main runway at Prescott, and we've reflected that throughout our land acquisition process on both ends of the runway. And that is a very important surface, primarily because it's the lowest of, there's a whole host of surfaces around the airport, but the one-engine inoperative departure splay is the lowest of them all. So that's the one that we focus on most heavily for commercial service airports because it's the lowest and has the most potential for obstacles. Allowing for unconstrained commercial service, that's why the departure splay is so important because the objective is if you have obstacles penetrating that departure splay, that's going to constrain a commercial service carrier from fully performing at your airport. So you always want to make sure that they're unconstrained. And you do that by making sure that there's nothing penetrating that departure splay because as soon as something penetrates that departure splay, the airline has to adjust. And they adjust by either removing passengers or cargo from the aircraft. So they have to reduce weight to clear that obstacle. So that's why the OEI splay is such an important element for a commercial service runway. Airport impact zones, we've talked a lot about airport impact zones over time. They range from what is referred to as Impact Zone 1 through 6. The ones that are most applicable for the land outside the airport are Impact Zones 1 through 4 because Impact Zone 5 is really on airport. And Airport Impact Zone 6 is really the flight path around the airport. So it's much, much less important than the other four impact zones. Reducing noise impacts, certainly when you acquire land and that prevents or eliminates the ability to construct houses, your noise impacts are going to be reduced. We all know every airport in the country has noise complaints. You wouldn't think that some of the small airports do, but I've worked at over 115 airports in this country, and there's always a noise complaint regardless of the size of the airport. So it's not unique to Prescott. But your ability to reduce those noise impacts are important for the community. And certainly protecting and preserving safety is always the ultimate objective of your airport and you as an airport sponsor. So you're obligated to make sure that you preserve and protect that safety for the traveling public and the community around the airport. Land acquisition timeline, if you recall, back in September of 2022, we started the appraisal process. We made three different changes to the parcels that we were going to acquire. That was a process that evolved through understanding some of the interest in the properties and recognizing what some of the fair market values were. We made some adjustments and tweaks in terms of what was being proposed to being acquired. But the final appraisals were issued back in July, about a year, almost a year ago, July 23. And as you know, Joe and his folks have been acquiring land since, so we'll talk about those as well. Lands acquired to date, the first one is the CVID parcel. That parcel is the borrow source for a potential runway extension. A very good acquisition in my mind. I think it was a very strategic and well-thought-out acquisition on behalf of the City Council. We've tested the soil. We are confident that it's soil that can be used for an embankment material for a runway extension. It is likely, very likely, it's going to save considerable cost of the runway extension. So that CVID parcel was an excellent, excellent choice to make in terms of acquisitions. Where we look at approach protection and compatible land use parcels, the first one is the North Ranch parcel, about 75 acres. That land was acquired for approach protection and for, to protect the impact zones off the end of the crosswind runway. As we know and we've discussed, the crosswind gets about 20%, 25% of the operations at the airport are associated with the crosswind runway. And we know the Forest Service routinely uses that crosswind runway. So it's important to protect that runway and certainly the impact zones off the end of it and the approach surfaces for that runway. So another needed compatible land use project. The South Ranch consists of about 84 acres. We have that one listed as pending because, as we know, that one is still going through the process. Again, another, as Kelly mentioned, it's approach protection for the airport and ensures compatible land use for the approaches to the main runway 3 right and the GA runway 3 left. The AD parcel is about 131 acres of property, completely vacant land, open land, and is needed for approach protection on the 21-left end. But as Kelly mentioned, depending on the length of the runway extension, the approach lighting surface lights may go on part of the AED parcel, again, depending on the ultimate length of the runway. So those are the parcels that have been acquired and are in the process of being acquired. So this is just a recap of graphically what they look like. The borrow source.
Excuse me, Charlie, I have a question.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, thank you. Are, is this going to be it, these parcels that we're talking about? Is this like the final strategic parcels that we have to acquire? Are we going to be done with this, or do you think that there's going to be more out there?
When you look at the parcels that we've identified on your airport layout plan that we updated a couple of years back, all of these parcels were reflected on that. Some of the shapes and acreages have been adjusted a little bit, but in concept, in principle, these are all the parcels that make up all the land that's being proposed as part of your airport layout plan. So for, and what that means is for the 20-year vision for the airport that's reflected on the airport layout plan, these comprise the parcels that are, that make up what was envisioned for the airport layout plan.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this is the borrow source, about 61 acres adjacent on the north side of the airfield. This makes up the 75 acres for the North Ranch. Again, approach protection for the approach to the crosswind runway. This is the, these are the parcels that comprise the South Ranch acquisition, about 84 acres. And this is representative of the 131 acres for the AED parcel. So this gets back to Councilman Rusing's comment about, if you were to look at the airport layout plan, these very closely mirror what's on the airport layout plan for the vision of the airport for the next 20 years. In terms of land acquisition cost, the fair market value for the CVID parcel closed at about $850,000. That represents the fair market value based on the appraisals. The North Ranch was closed at about $8 million. And again, these are, these are not precise accurate numbers, but they're ballpark in terms of the costs because there are some closing costs and other costs that may or may not be reflected in these numbers. But it's approximately $8 million. And then the South Ranch is pending, and Joe has indicated that that value is about $10 million. And the AED parcel, again, the fair market value was much less than the $3 million, but for discussion purposes, we're using that as a placeholder value for the AED parcel until then, those negotiations are complete. So in total, you're around $21 million for land acquisition to reflect everything that we've looked at. And then I don't know if you want to go into the additional information or there's.
And we do, as part of the presentation council received beforehand, we do have that additional information, the different slides. If you'd like, Mayor, we could go through those. If not, we could answer any questions at this point based on this part of the presentation.
Well, other members of the council, would you like to see those additional slides? Yeah, please proceed then.
Okay. So we were asked a month or so ago to plot on a map all of the accidents at Prescott for the runway 3 right and 3 left approach. So what we did is we plotted all of them. All of this information came directly from the NTSB's website. This is all public information. So we took the coordinates for each accident and plotted them on a map for your use or for your information. And again, we didn't, Dibble did not, we didn't verify. We didn't do anything other than just plot publicly available information on the drawings. One thing we did add is the impact zones for the 3 right and 3 left approach. So you could see the relationship between the accidents and the impact zones for those runway approaches.
Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Charlie, I had a question. You, and maybe it's on there and I'm not seeing it because it's got small print, but do you know how far back this goes?
I think it's, I think it was 1982 or 1984. It's in the legend down on the side.
So that's almost 40 years.
Yeah.
Just because I was born in 84, so it's easy math for me. Are those, and I just saw I'm reading this right, a lot of those blue ones are, it looks like they're right on the runway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This next slide.
Mayor Potem Cantelmi had a question.
Charlie, I wanted to clarify too. I went on the NTSB website also and collected all these crashes that actually go back to 1964. And what I got out of that were there were 168 crashes from 1964. Is there a reason you didn't go back further? And if you had, would you have found a little different? I do understand it only takes one. And, but what I found, and I copied it off for anybody to see, was 168.
Yeah, we, I can, I can go back and verify how, the date that we went back to, but
Okay.
if you're interested, we can, we can go even further back if you'd like.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I wanted to clarify for the public because I've talked about this quite a bit in forums and on radio shows and things like that. And I had a gentleman call in, a couple of people called in and said, "Well, it doesn't seem like there's that many in the crash zones." And I agreed with them. But I said, "Think about 284 homes, 5 feet, and some of them may even have gas components in the homes. Just those few dots right there could cause a major catastrophe because then it's chain-linked through the gas part." So I did want to just clarify that for the public because it's been a concern of mine, and I've been questioned about it repeatedly for close to a year now. And that's why I carry this around because.
So what was the date that you went back to? What year?
I'm sorry, tell me that again.
What was the year that you went back to?
1964.
64, okay.
Yeah, and it's 168 crashes. Now, it doesn't tell me exactly where they were and if there were deaths. Let's see if it says. Yes, it actually does say the death toll on here. Anybody can get this, though, if you just dig around on there. But again, I just wanted to tell people, the reason we haven't had mass casualty is because we haven't had homes 5 feet apart in those areas. So we've been very, very lucky over the years. And again, nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen in those areas in terms of development, just even outside of them. And the other thing, again, for the public's benefit, is these crash zones or impact zones, these are not things that people just arbitrarily pick out of the sky. These are areas that airplanes are most likely to crash if they're going to have a, you know, if they've got a problem with the engine or whatever the issue might be. Thank you, Charlie.
And that's how they were developed, those impact zones anyways, is they took crashes from all across the country and said, "Okay, where do most of them happen?" And so that's how those impact zones were created originally anyway. So they weren't, they weren't just, they didn't just pull them out of the sky about where they were. It was based on actual crash data across the country. So we'll go back further if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one relates to, in the red box out on the left, I think that's Zone 2 or Zone 3, there's a triangle right on the red line, and I think the date is September 2, 23, because that's the closest one I could find date-wise. Is that the plane that landed here from Scottsdale, filled up with gas and took off with four passengers in it and a full tank of gas and landed in a field?
Yeah, I'm not, I'd have to go back and look.
Christina's shaking her head, so.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure, because I remember the headline.
Yeah.
And I wanted to make sure that, so the land we're looking at definitely falls there. And if there had been a baseball field or parked cars, those four passengers may never have walked away from that accident with a full tank of gas. So that's the first thing. The second question I have, and I'm allowed to ask these things because I'm the newbie one. So how much of this area to the left, you know, I heard your opening presentation and all of the, you know, why, but are these things new? You know, the whys of all of these OEI splay requirements and, you know, federal grant assurance? These aren't new.
No.
So did we just ignore these things in the past by not securing this way back when?
Well, I can't speak to that, but you have to remember the OEI splay is connected to commercial service activity. So if you have an airport that doesn't have commercial service activity, you wouldn't have the departure splay. So, you know, so they became applicable when you began to have commercial service at the airport.
Which was, what year did we begin having commercial?
2018, yeah.
2018, 2019.
Right. Now, the other ones, the grant assurance, that grant assurance has been around for, you know, decades and decades. So that is not a new grant assurance.
And so if we do not buy all of that, then the chances going forward that the FAA would give us grants would be strongly diminished to eliminated?
You are obligated to ensure compatible land use around your airports. That's what FAA requires you to do as part of that grant assurance. Whether that impacts your ability, if you don't, if you don't adhere to the grant assurances, whether, how that may impact future funding by FAA, that's a question for FAA, but, but.
But you're both experts in the field. What have you seen when other people have ignored these things in the past?
I can tell you that if an airport has an issue that arises with one of their grant assurances, not necessarily just this one, but whether it's revenue-related or, normally the FAA doesn't look fondly on that airport sponsor. So, you know, the airport, FAA really likes airport sponsors that are good sponsors, that adhere to your grant assurances, that take grants, get them done, get the projects done, get the grants closed out. FAA really likes airport sponsors that are good sponsors. And being a good sponsor is adhering to your grant assurances, closing out your grants, making FAA look good, have good projects, minimize any public controversy about a project in particular. So anything you can do to be a good airport sponsor is to your benefit in FAA's eyes.
Charlie, can you bring your microphone up a little bit?
Sure.
Just so that the people online can, can you hear you better? Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. As elected officials, we're entrusted with the public safety, public health, public welfare of the community. And unfortunately, in 2017, when this property was annexed by the city, it was in the county previously. And this property that we're acquiring was originally zoned industrial light. It was properly zoned to protect the airport. And then when we annexed it, it was all zoned SBC, specially planned community, and we lost all those airport, all the protections of this crash zone. So this is a zoning issue, and we need to acquire this property because legally now, we have to issue permits for churches, schools, homes, daycares in the crash zone. And morally, we know that's wrong, but legally, we have to do it because if we don't, we'll get taken to court and we'll lose. So we're trying to fix a problem that was created several years ago, and I just hope the public understands this and going forward. And going forward, hopefully, we won't repeat this error again. Thank you.
Please proceed.
So, this slide represents the OEI splay. This is what you call a heat map, where it compares the OEI splay surface against the existing terrain. So, what is represented here is a departure splay for the existing carrier at the airport. And as you can see, as you are closer to the airport and to the end of the runway up in the north, up into the top right-hand corner, the red represents a surface that's very close to the terrain. As you proceed out, the terrain drops off and the surface rises, so there's more clearance. But then, as you get further out into the splay, the terrain rises and the color intensifies, meaning that you're getting closer to the splay itself. So, this slide is meant to represent those approximate distances between the splay and the existing terrain. And as we've discussed, the terrain varies quite a lot. So, there isn't one distance from the splay to the ground that, you know, we can't say it's, you got 35 feet of clearance because it all depends on where you are relative to the splay. But you can see the terrain varies greatly as you proceed out into the departure.
Yeah, thanks for that one, Charlie. I hadn't seen a topographical representation of the OEI before. And knowing that there are variations of height there, which can have a major impact on what can be built and at what height.
Exactly, right.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Charlie, I had a question for you. I just want to make sure I'm looking at this right. This is the current SkyWest OEI splay as it is today.
Correct, yes.
So, this is the one they use?
Yes.
I guess that kind of leads me to my second question. If a different carrier with, if the runway extension were to proceed and we were able to bring in larger planes at some point with bigger capacity, do we have any idea what that OEI splay would look at? And I guess this is getting to Councilmember Rusing's question, which is if bigger planes are there, I would imagine the OEI splay would change, but maybe, I don't know, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, if you remember, there's, and I think it's actually this next slide, nope. We have another slide that shows a combination of all of the airline's splays put together.
Right, composite.
Yeah, the composite one, which is much wider. So, another airline, their splay may be in a different location, and the turn may be tighter, maybe less to the right. So, it all depends on the airline and their unique splay to their business.
I guess that leads me to another question, which is, is it the case that an airline carrier is going to modify their OEI splay to what the available land usage is?
They wouldn't necessarily modify the splay, but they would modify their operations.
Okay.
So, they would say, you know, "Here's our splay for our fleet of aircraft for our airline." And recognizing the obstacles that may be out in the vicinity of the airport, they would adjust their operations. So, that may be, they would have to just wait.
So, and I guess, again, I'm just assuming a longer runway and a larger aircraft would probably have a significant modification to an OEI splay, is that correct?
One more time?
A larger, a longer runway, so if we extended the runway, and then if we had larger aircraft taking off, that would more than likely change the OEI splay going forward.
It wouldn't change the splay because the splays are based off the end of the runway.
Sure.
Not how long the other end of the runway is.
Okay.
So, the splay would always, this would be your splay regardless of how long the runway ends up being, okay? So, they always have to protect this surface.
Okay. And so, then the answer to that question is no, it wouldn't change with the extension of the runway. And so, with the type of aircraft, like the size of the aircraft, would that change the OEI splay?
It could, depending on the aircraft, yes.
Do we have any idea what that modification would look like at this point?
Well, it depends on what airline and what aircraft you want to pick.
What role do airlines play in, other than taking advantage of the subsidy from the City of Prescott to purchase this land, what part do they play in helping us mitigate the cost of this?
Well, if there were obstacles in this existing splay, they would just adjust their operations. So, if something were to penetrate through the splay and it caused, and the airline would just adjust how they operate. So, that may mean less passengers, depending on the weather condition, less cargo on the aircraft, you know, luggage and everything. So, somehow, they'd have to reduce weight to mitigate that obstacle that existed. So, anything that penetrates this, it's just going to decrease their performance or their ability to perform unconstrained.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I was, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but in order to get FAA reimbursement, I know the environmental assessment study is very important. Have you done any of that yet on this property, or when do you plan on doing it?
For the acquisition?
Yes.
I haven't done it yet because I want to understand what land you actually want to purchase and who's going to fund it. Because if it's FAA-funded parcels, then you're right, I need to do an environmental document, a categorical exclusion. But if you fund a parcel locally, then I don't need to do a CADAX for it. So, at this point, I'm waiting for direction. So, because I, you know, I don't want to do a CADAX on more land than you're going to use FAA money for, because then I'm just wasting your money, because that's not needed. So...
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Charlie, just to go back to your previous comment, and correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest airplane that goes out of that airport to date is our bomber for the fire, is that right? The fire tanker, is that the largest?
When you say the biggest, mean the heaviest?
I'm sorry?
The heavy?
Yeah.
Probably the heaviest is probably the...
And again, for the public's knowledge, there are occasions in the summer in particular where those tanker bombers, or whatever we're calling them, have to leave here half-full with fire retardant to fight some fires. Because we don't have a long enough runway in order for them to be able to get up high enough to be able to make it out of there.
Yeah, and I think some of that is the pavement strength itself. I'm not sure they can get out fully loaded based on the pavement strength. So, it's a combination of things there, but the runway length certainly plays into it.
I just drove up from Prescott, and I have got that ear thing right now. I can't hardly hear you, I'm sorry. Talk, speak a little. I don't know how to clear my ear. I used to be a scuba diver, I used to know how to do that, it's just not working, and I apologize. But, so getting back to that, so is there any other airplane that flies in and out of there that is heavier and bigger than that airplane, just now, for now?
Not that I'm aware of, you know, but you could have an occasional, you know, visitor from, whether it's a military aircraft or something of that nature, but not that I'm aware of.
But don't they get some kind of an exception?
You have waivers, yeah.
Maybe a one-time waiver?
Yeah, you get waivers, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And the waivers are for pavement strength.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for you. When I look at the land that's got the yellow dots around it, and if I look kind of left of Willow Creek Road, you hit an area just before it starts getting deep red where you've got a lot of different variation there, but right near the point of it, it's about 15 feet is what your chart says.
Correct.
So, if we weren't aware of all these issues, if we were back in 2019, would we expect, then, anybody who owns this land currently, that they'd be required to operate with keeping their houses below 15 feet? How do I think about this footage?
Well, so, the yellow dash line represents the parcels that were proposing to be acquired. If you were to go back in time and someone wanted to build something in that area, they would be required to do the airspace analysis like we do for all developments through the FAA 7460 process. And that would flag that structure that someone is proposing to build, and they would identify whether or not it needed to be mitigated through either removing it or not allowing it, or putting a red obstruction light on it. So, that would have been the, and that's still the process today. If there's a development out there, they're obligated to go through the airspace analysis with FAA to determine if they're going to be an obstacle for the airspace.
And Joe, is that the case with SPC zoning? Is there any exception to not have to go through that process?
For the 7460 process, they have, everyone has to go through with it, even in SPC zoning. Now, your question as to OEI splay is different, that doesn't get tagged in the 7460, correct me if I'm wrong?
Right.
So, it could only be protected through zoning that established these height limitations. It wouldn't be found otherwise. Whether it was through SPC zoning or industrial or anything in the past, there was no protection for OEI splay at any point to this time.
Right. So, what would happen in theory, and this is theoretical, if something were to be constructed out in that area, the first step would be certainly the city planning folks. They would encourage and make sure that whoever wanted to construct something would go through FAA's airspace process. And if nothing was flagged, if it was in that known splay, then hopefully, they would reach out to us and we would help them determine whether whatever wants to be constructed is going to penetrate that splay.
And if it was, it was 15, 16 feet high, what would happen?
Then we would recommend that that structure not be constructed, whatever that is.
And if they still chose to construct it, then are they more liable than us?
Well, I don't know about liability, but once the airline knew about that obstacle, then they would have to adjust their operations accordingly. So, if the airline said, "Well, you're constructing whatever at that location at that height, that's going to impact our performance, our ability to operate at Prescott," they may say, "Well, that," and depending on the weather conditions in the summer, that may mean three more people have to get off the aircraft. So, it all depends where it is and how far it penetrates into that OEI splay. But every obstacle to that splay would need to be analyzed separately. And we'd have to determine how much it's going to impact your operations.
And when we talk about liability, I mean, most of this isn't a question of liability, but if you're talking about liability, it's an airline carrier liability, which is why they have to change their operations if there's something in the way.
Right.
So, when we talk about protecting the splay, we're talking about giving airlines a place where they can actually do business profitably. Otherwise, they change their operations or they leave. So, it's not so much a question of liability as a question of knowing that's how airlines operate, commercial air service, whether to remain or to become a viable operation.
I understand. And the general plan, going back way back when, said this was going to be a commercially viable operating airport. And now, I'm just trying to figure out how much money we're going to have to spend on all of this, and if there's anything we could leave off the table, that's why I'm asking these questions. It sounds like there's nothing we can leave off the table.
Well, and if you go back, I mean, we did narrow, you know, we reduced the amount of land that we were proposing to acquire just because of that, because of the way the values were coming in. So, we narrowed it down to the bare minimum, so to speak, of what would need to be acquired to protect that splay. So, the splay became the most important element of the land acquisition for this end of the runway. But it also encompasses the impact zones as well, for at least the center portion of it.
Yeah, when the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan was approved in November of 2017, the height restrictions were known. What the problem was, was that the agreement allowed the administrator of the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan to determine if a construction of public-related facilities could be put in those areas. And those civic determinations included things like churches. So, they determined that a church would be allowed to be built in some of those areas because it's very infrequently occupied. But if you look back at that crash list, you look at that May 22 crash, that was right in the location where a current church is being constructed. And it happened at 10 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday. Gee, what happens on Sundays at 10 o'clock in the morning? You can have a substantial number of occupants in those churches because of the allowance that the master plan included and the city council at that time approved. So, those were some of the conditions that had not been really clarified before a vote went forward by that council. But they did approve it, and now we're dealing with some of the consequences. So, I think that has an impact not only on the type of construction that goes in those areas, but obviously, the height and how that impacts the OEI splay.
Right.
So, some of the considerations are the type of aircraft, the weight of that aircraft, and the power of those engines to be able to reach an acceptable altitude within a specific amount of time.
Right.
So, Mayor Protem, your concerns about the slurry bombers are legitimate, and that's why we were allowed, I think, what, 200 exceptions a year?
I'm not sure what the...
I don't know what that number is.
Yeah.
Something like that.
It's in that vicinity.
So, if we have a very heavy slurry bomber-loaded aircraft that needs to have an exception to be able to use the runway because of the height, because of the weight, then we're allowed to do that.
Right.
But still, you're not going to have a fully-loaded slurry bomber taken off. That just exceeds the weight, even the exception limits, right?
Yep.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question regarding the OEI splay. My impression was that the OEI splay is largely used by commercial air service. Is it used by entities other than commercial air service, like the slurry bombers, for instance?
These are for commercial service activities, so I don't, I'm not aware that the Forest Service has their own departure splays for those slurry bombers.
So, I just want to make sure, so the OEI splay largely driven by commercial air service?
Yes.
Okay, just thank you for that clarity, appreciate that.
Yep. Just a couple more slides on the airport impact zones. They're prescribed by a couple of FAA guidance documents. First one is Advisory Circular for Land Use Planning Around Airports. This has been in existence for many, many decades. FAA also did publish an FAA guidance document specific to land use planning around airports. Again, these are guidance documents that are published nationally, and all airports that accept grants are obligated to adhere to them. We went through the impact zones, so just to run through them very quickly, impact zone one is your runway protection zone. The ones that are most applicable to most airports off airport property are zones two through six. And again, with the exception of five, that's really on airport. But two, three, and four are the big ones that most folks focus on because they are routinely off airport property. And the traffic pattern one is impact zone number six. These represent the impact zones for the runway three right and three left approaches. And again, zone one, you can see is the runway protection zone, which is mostly on airport property, crosses the street a little bit. But two, three, and four are the big ones that we focus on most heavily for airports when it relates to land use compatibility. And then, this just summarizes the funding availability that exists today through use of your existing FAA entitlements, a congressionally designated fund through Senator Kelly's office of $3 million, and then carryover of our future use of your fiscal year 25 entitlements of about $1 million. So, in total, from FAA funding right now, you have about $7 million available for land acquisition. Through the state, you've secured for fiscal year 25, $3.1 million. So, when you add that up, your total secured funding today for land acquisition is a little over $10 million. And I think that's it.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I am interested in understanding, and I know Thursday we begin the May 9 budget workshop process. I would like to understand how these FAA and ADOT funds, using them to purchase land, what impact that will have on airport operations and capital plans? You know, what, what are we giving up by using this money to buy land to protect the airport? And so I don't know that you have an answer today, but I really would like to talk about it on Thursday, if you don't.
You want any comments?
I'm looking at Mr. Woodfall, too, and Mr. Goodman.
And I can speak to that. Generally speaking, if we're looking at entitlements, these are things that obviously we are entitled to get from the FAA. They typically go towards capital projects at the airport. If, if we wanted to maintain those same level of projects going forward, one would suppose that it would have to then come from the general fund to replace those entitlement funds that would be used for land acquisition. That's just generally speaking. On the second budget meeting, which I believe is the 16th, is when we'll be touching on the airport, correct? Or the first meeting? The first meeting. See, I'm in the loop here. So yes, Thursday, we will be touching on that, and we can speak more to it. But in general terms, entitlement would be going to capital projects, but under this scenario, would be going to land acquisition.
That's what I'm concerned about is, because I know we, just in the last few council meetings, we've, I think, approved some repaving of driveways on the airport or other kinds of, sorry, I say driveways. You have a much more technical airport term to it. But, you know, that's what I'm worried about, is that we let the airport degrade over the course of two years or so in order to invest in land. So I'm just trying to understand the trade-offs.
And I'll also speak more specifically, the money from ADOT and that CDS from Senator Kelly's office, those are specifically for land acquisition, so they would not be going to any other project. So over $6 million of that is dedicated to land acquisition.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I have a question for Charlie as to the process of these grants. As I understand, the FAA will fund like 50% of it upfront, and then, once the, the acquisition is complete, then they fund the second half. I mean, exactly how does that work?
So with land acquisition, it's the, it's the only thing that FAA funds after the fact. So what FAA says to airports is, if you're going to acquire land, you front all the money yourself, and then it's based on a reimbursement-type basis. So with land acquisition, once Joe closes on, on a parcel, I gather up the appraisals, we gather up all the closing documents, the survey, the description, and we do a grant reimbursement at that, at that point. They won't reimburse you for land acquisition before you've closed on the property. And that, and then, so the reimbursement is for all of it at once, given that there's entitlement money available.
So, so I assume the property owner wants all his money upfront?
Well, you, you would have to pay it first, so it's reimbursement to the sponsor. So the sponsor has to front the money and pay it, and then you, you get reimbursed.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Charlie, I want you to get out your crystal ball.
Uh-oh.
So if we, right now, 21850 was your first, one of your first slides for the total land costs. According to this slide, we've got a little over $10 million. Are you actively seeking more? That's my first question. And then I know there's been some discrepancy on at least one appraisal. Does the FAA, if it comes back adjusted, will the FAA adjust their, their grant to us in order to cover the difference in the appraisal?
Yeah, yes. So the, the parcel that you're referring to is back in the last revision of the takings, we, we had a larger parcel appraised that, larger parcel appraised than what you're interested in acquiring. So there is one parcel that we have to have the appraisers revise to get an accurate appraised value for that one parcel because they appre, they appraise a larger piece than what you're suggesting to, to acquire. So it's just one appraisal report that needs to be adjusted. But regardless of the fair market value, that would be eligible for reimbursement, whether it's higher or lower. The FAA is obligated to reimburse you for that fair market value of that appraisal report.
So are you actively seeking, and are there other grants that we could potentially be able to secure in the future?
For FAA, you're, you're eligible for AIP-type Airport Improvement Program grants. Those are really the only ones that FAA offers, other than any unique funding such that Senator Kelly retained for the, for the city. So absent FAA, it really comes down to congressionally-directed spending from, from your elected officials. The funding that you're using is your entitlement funds. We've been, we've been cautioned by FAA not to apply for discretionary funding for land acquisition. Not that it's not eligible, because land acquisition is eligible for discretionary funding, but it, it goes by a priority basis of all projects across the country. And they've told us, you know, it's not that it's not eligible, it's just so far down the priority list, it'll never get funded using discretionary funding. But your entitlements, as, as Tyler has mentioned, your entitlements are, is your, it's your money, and it's an eligible project, so you can spend it any way you see fit on, on an FAA-eligible project.
Well, I was very happy to see that at least we've got 50% almost of this 21 million covered, a little over 21 million. So good work. Thank you.
And the thing is, you know, the entitlement money, that's, that's available today, that's your, that's your existing balance, your current balance. Senator Kennedy's, Senator Kelly's funds, the FAA will issue that grant sometime in the summer, we've been told.
July.
July. And then your 25 entitlements, those are, those are available pretty soon as well, and the state money is available. So all this money is available.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I share Councilwoman Furworth's concerns around what, what are the trade-offs here? Because with entitlements, beyond, when you say capital improvement projects at the airport, the single biggest capital improvement project that I've heard two airport directors now talk about is the runway extension. And so my concern is, are we taking away from our ability to do the runway extension by acquiring this land from our entitlements? And I guess my, my question to you is, my impression is that those entitlements are driven by our commercial air service? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
The claimants that we're achieving?
Yes.
So I guess, what I think, and I'm sorry to pitch a worst-case scenario here, but if we have to forestall our runway extension and commercial aviation pivots to larger planes that we can't accommodate because we don't have the funds to harden our runway and extend it, then we might have protected commercial airspace for an OEI splay that no longer exists in Prescott. And I guess to me, I'm thinking that's putting the cart before the horse. I see the runway extension as the number one concern we have at the airport right now. And I think from a high-level view, which is what we're charged with doing up here, we have to look at, we have to, we have to engage in some prioritization around the airport. And so my concern is, while in a perfect world, we would be able to buy all the land to protect the airport, and I, and I certainly don't want anyone to be harmed by airplanes falling out of the sky ever, I, I wonder if we're not putting ourselves in a bit of a tight squeeze with our ability to move forward on the runway extension. And I know that I had been under the impression that we were going to receive 95% funding on that runway extension, and my understanding now is that best-case scenario, we're going to receive 75%. And that's like sterling best case. That's more likely we're looking at maybe 50%, maybe less than that even. And again, that's a situation, we're talking about a, somewhere in the neighborhood of a 65-plus million-dollar project, that we're going to have to pay all upfront for and bond, and we won't have entitlements to help us with that debt service, which means that we will have to take money from the general fund to do that. And we are already in a tight squeeze with the general fund. I'm just worried that we have too many irons in the fire here, and that this land acquisition is going to lead us down a path where we can't do the necessary capital, because it's not as if, just because we're buying this land, capital improvements at the airport stop having a need. And that's my real concern.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Brandon, I have to say, I respectfully disagree. And, and let me just tell you why. We have landowners right now that want to proceed with their plans. We can't be penny-wise and pound-foolish again. We're going to get one shot at acquiring this property as we need it. I don't think it's fair to say that we can go to any landowner and say, "Oh, could you wait 15 to 20 years till we get the money to buy this property from you? The time is now, and we need to start this process." I think we can walk and chew gum. Number one on my list is safety. Safety now and into the future. And we can't, we cannot, we don't have a crystal ball to be able to see what's going to happen out there. They have rights to be able to do what they want to do if we do not acquire this land. This is our chance now, and I agree with Kathy and Lois, this should have been done many years ago. It wasn't. We've got an opportunity to do it right now, and we have to be able to do it. I just don't see any other way that we can put safety up on the cupboard and wait for something to happen and just cross our fingers and hope nothing does happen. I think we have to strike now, and it's, it's not wonderful to have to come up with more than $10 million, but it is what it is, and we, we just have to do it. There's, it's just not reasonable to think that people are going to wait for us to get our act together and get money. It has to happen. I just, if somebody can offer another way, rather than just crossing our fingers and hoping we don't have some kind of a catastrophe after homes do go in those areas, I'm happy to listen. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. I would just like to make the point that this is about public safety. We need to protect our runways from encroachment, and if we don't, we won't see any FAA funding. The FAA will say, "Hey, if you can't even protect the runways from encroachment, we're not going to fund you. We're going to fund the people that are following the rules and the guidelines and protecting the airport from encroachment."
So I guess we can, yeah, Kelly?
May I offer an opinion? And I, I say this with all due respect to all members and members of the public, and to my colleague, and I hate to start off by saying I agree with everybody, but, but I do. But the reality is that we're in a financial pinch. And unfortunately, for whatever reason, the anticipated funding for our much-needed and much-desired runway expansion program, we're not going to get nearly as much as what was anticipated. And that places substantial future financial burden that was unanticipated, which Charlie talked about is absolutely correct. This started with the master plan, all of this property, and it is for safety purposes, protect against encroachment of our safety zones. However, again, it is, it is trade-offs. It is, we are already financially pinched, and it's not going to get better. I believe, from my professional opinion, best-case scenario, the runway may receive 75% funding, and we've got a ways to go. That's if we have a very solid BCR. I do not know yet if we'll get there. I remain committed and optimistic. So there's a lot of things, and for me, I don't want to come across as armchair quarterbacking, but there really is a lot of strategery that, you know, probably should have gone more into it, whether it goes to 2017 or beyond, or most, or just the last couple of years. But this is a very, very, this is a small-budget airport with very big ambitions. And to fund that, there's just not the revenue streams. We look at the $1 million and $18,000, and that's not going to change anytime soon. So, and we can't depend on, you know, the generosity of Senator Kelly. Again, am I giving up on this airport? Absolutely not. But there are, I just wanted to say that we absolutely are, you know, we have substantial challenges ahead of this airport going forward. And I would also say that, and this is not to disagree with my colleague here, but I'm a huge advocate of all 37 of our grant assurances, and specifically Charlie cited Grant Assurance 21, which is compatible land use. And maybe in many respects, in the true spirit of the FAA, it says, well, reasonably, it does not mandate that we have to acquire all of this property. We can, and I'm not saying you don't. Again, we started a process, this has all been identified as should be acquired. And I actually commend the prior director and other people for initiating a plan to try to do that. But again, when you've got major projects on the horizon, you may need to budget, or balance things budget-wise. So I don't want anybody to think that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the FAA ever told us, if you don't buy all of this property, or if you, you know, exactly like this, then you're not going to do your runway extension. I mean, that, to my knowledge, that direction has never been given, nor will it ever. But I just wanted, again, I hate to close by saying I agree with everybody. I think that there's been fantastic points here. But we have substantial challenges that, for, for the airport to be successful, I think we have to advance these plans. But also, it is going to place additional financial burden on the city's general fund, I believe. That's, that's my outside, my humble opinion. And with that, again, I don't, I don't, that is not intended as a Debbie Downer statement. I am very optimistic and positive about this place's future, but there are substantial financial challenges that go along with all of this, as we advance through the land acquisition, the runway expansion project, and with all due respect, there's a number of other capital projects that we need to address and look at going forward. So, thank you.
Are we going to proceed to the analysis of these various parcels and their cost and possible donations to cover that? I had a question, if we're, if we proceed with the acquisition of these areas in zones like one, two, and three, and we look at acquiring zones maybe out in four and in the splay later on, does that reduce the FAA's interest in reimbursing us for less risky zone property acquisition?
It's going to depend on exactly where those parcels are, because there is a line, we have, we have a drawing that shows the, the limits of FAA eligibility. We don't have that graphic here today, but there is a line that represents the limit where the, the land would no longer be eligible for FAA funding. The state is, is more generous in their definition of approach protection, so it could be eligible for the state, not FAA, depending on where that parcel was. But is, is, if there's a plan in place, FAA recognizes, land acquisition is, it's the hardest darned project you can ever do in an airport. Believe me, I've been doing it for 35 years at airports, and they're just tough. They're always tough. And FAA understands that. And if, if you're making process, progress towards your ultimate goal of acquiring a certain amount of land, then FAA recognizes that. So if, if everything wasn't purchased today, and, and you phased it over time, as long as FAA knows what the plan is, then they would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't penalize you, so to speak, and, and for not being a good grant.
Yeah, that's helpful, no. And if we're talking about approach land, then we're talking about the extension of the runway, right?
Yes.
So right now, we're looking at the departure areas. So considering the condition of our state's budget, I don't think we're going to get too much ADOT funding for approach support. Maybe for another couple of years, if we can get out from under this huge deficit.
Yeah, the, the state is always more of a wild card, so to speak, in terms of available funding because of the, because of the challenges with the state legislature. Obviously, FAA is, is, is more reliable because we have the AIP reauthorization that, that just happened. So that's, that's good news in terms of securing that funding going forward, but the state is, is much, it's, it's more, more subjective or more unreliable.
The federal government can print money and the state can't. Would you want to take a look at these different parcels? And we can kind of compare what available acquisition funding we have with the parcels that may be acquired within the recommended acquisition funding.
Yeah, we, we need to switch the slide shows, and we can get into those.
Okay.
Mayor, am I up?
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Attorney Young.
So the debate you've been having today is, is the question that you need answered. And these are the two main questions. Do we want to acquire properties in South Ranch? Do we want to- Do we want to acquire the currently identified properties? And we'll pull up the map. But essentially, this became an issue where, because of the development agreement, if we want to protect this land and ensure compatible land use, we've kind of promised certain types of zoning. In order to change that, we're stuck in a situation where we have to acquire that land if we want to change the land uses. So this is the map of what was identified as being kind of the bare minimum in South Ranch that we need to acquire. And so I have prices on there. I know you have in front of you, which should be a little bit better. Some of these are appraised, some of these are estimated. If you look at, for example, parcel four and parcel five, those have estimates based on, they were smaller pieces of larger parcels. And so kind of on a per-acre basis, we took numbers that were equivalent to the larger parcels that they're appraised under. But this is the estimated area, or estimated amount of the areas that we think we need to acquire, that the airport identified that we need to acquire. Now, if you look at it, we have the closer part to the airport, which is impact zones two. And what we're trying to ensure there is that there be essentially no churches. That's the one use that the airport is not comfortable with. South of that is impact zone four, which allows housing currently, that airport-identified housing as being incompatible use. So it's housing in zone four, churches in zone two, and the OEIS play. Those are essentially the three main things we're looking to protect. So we've been discussing, as we go along, two possible deal options. One was included, it was a comprehensive settlement agreement with the landowner that included an annexation of about 600 acres located currently north of the city limits. Or, based on direction in our last meeting, a simple purchase-and-sell agreement of specific properties, rather than a comprehensive agreement with the annexation. So I'll first kind of briefly go over the comprehensive agreement that we discussed. And in that deal, the city would pay $10 million for all of the property. That would mean certain properties would be donated to the city, because if you looked at that appraised value, it's worth something like 13-point-something million. We'll get the number in a second. So we'd pay a little less than the full amount. Certain property, property would be donated to the city, and in return, the city would annex 600 acres north of the city. Another big part of that deal was that the city would reimburse for sewer and water extension, for that infrastructure extension. Now, that is recoverable by the city through impact fees, but that's 10, 20-year timeframe for recovering that fee, those fees. Some of the other deal points for the comprehensive agreement is that the city would build and maintain trails within the areas that we acquired, that we would reimburse the cost of streets through the acquired property. We would allow the owner to use approximately 27 acres of the donated property for parking lots, parks, and drainage. We'd waive annexation costs. We would agree to liquidated damages if the deal didn't go through, and that we would agree that any city-purchased or acquired properties would be subject to the master plan. And I, there was also an agreement that 100 acres of the annexed property would be open space. So that's the comprehensive agreement. The simple purchase-and-sell agreement I did, would that, it would be a cash-for-property transaction, similar to the transaction that occurred in North Ranch. The city, the property was assessed by our assessors, and I told you about the estimates, we need to get that updated, at 13.5 million. Now, I will tell you, I got a letter, the city manager, interim city manager, and I got a letter requesting that the city provide an offer to purchase that land as part of the condemnation process. So just as a background, a little bit, if the city or any municipality condemns land, the first step in that process is to make an offer for purchase for the amount that it's appraised at. And then the landowner decides whether to accept that or not, and if not, then you go to your condemnation action at court. So, so the landowner has requested that we provide that letter, and we start the condemnation process, which is a decision to be made by council, and we're requesting that guidance. So as we were looking at the, whether to do the annexation comprehensive agreement or just the simple purchase-and-sell agreement, we looked at the pros and the cons. And so the pros of annexation would be, the water and density would not increase. So the landowner's entitled to 10,500 homes, I could be wrong, somebody correct me, and that wouldn't change. They would still be entitled to that amount of homes. The annexation allows the city to control the land use and the water there, increase revenue, decrease overall density, move the density away from the airport. And, and so there's certainly some pros to the annexation approach. It would also lower the price. But on the con side, we would have to extend the infrastructure and water and sewer, and that kind of more than makes up for the amount of money we would save on the purchase. So that is recoverable, like I said, but that would be over 10 to 20 years. And that, from council's perspective, I think, and council, you can address this, was a reason why annexation didn't make as much sense, given kind of some of the other concerns with annexation.
You know, Joe, we've got a couple of questions here. I wanted to make sure we didn't get too deeply into this until we had a chance to have those asked. Councilmember Rusin?
Yeah, I have, I've been against annexing that 600 acres since it was presented, since day one. There is absolutely no benefit to the city of Prescott for that annexation. I'd like to remind everyone of the original owner, Aunt Mitzi and her husband. They only wanted 10% of the ranch to be developed. You can see that number. It's on their website for their Deepwell Ranch Foundation. And if we, you know, how do we know we're meeting Aunt Mitzi's wishes? You know, we, we haven't seen the trust documents or anything like that, and apparently legally, we don't have to. So we just have to take the, the owner's word for it. But we've already got Deepwell Ranch, which is 10,500 homes. It's a bit larger than Anthem, north of Phoenix, which is its own incorporated city. And to me, that's the 10%. It's already been met. Why would we annex another 600 acres? It's urban sprawl. There's absolutely no benefit to us to annex that. So I've always been against it. This is a public safety issue, and we just need to concentrate on purchasing the land. And also, I'd like to add, if you look at our city charter, page two, there's, if you read it, it specifically says that the landowner is responsible for bringing water and sewer to their property line. That's how we used to do it. That's how Yavapai Hills did it. And I don't know why, all of a sudden, these last couple of years, we're bringing utilities to, and buying all the easements with taxpayer dollars to benefit the private owner, to bring these utilities to their property line. We never used to do that. So we need to look at the city charter. The charter committee is working on clarifying that. But I am totally 100%. Plus, the main thing is, we're going to the ballot to put 9.5% tax increase, because we're behind. We're trying to catch up with public safety.
Point 9.5.
And here we, 0.95, I'm sorry. And here we are with a straight face. We're going to ask the taxpayers to say, "Oh, yeah, by the way, we're behind, we're trying to catch up, and now we want to annex 600 acres more." To me, that makes no sense, and it's totally inappropriate. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that if we are going to the taxpayers, asking for a tax increase, proceeding down this path of land acquisition makes no sense, although I don't think that's exactly what Kathy was saying. But that's one point I want to make, is that I, I just don't know how we can unring the bell of asking taxpayers for additional revenue while we're going out and spending more money on land. I think it's, I, I mean, I understand the necessity. I respectfully disagree that I would, I would prioritize the runway expansion plan over this land acquisition personally. But I, I think that if we're going to ask taxpayers to fund additional public safety, they're going to look at this plan for land acquisition and see that we're prioritizing putting funding towards, general fund funding towards the airport going forward. And that's pretty much what Kelly just said when he came up, is that, from his perspective, this plan moving forward will put us in a position where we will have to use more general fund money to fund capital projects at the airport. That's still a bit concerning mine. But my question was on, Joe, on the comprehensive agreement deal, or the, there, you said something, I think it was, yeah, the comprehensive agreement. There's 100 acres for open space. Can you, can you remind me what the total requirement for open space is?
Yeah, so I, I think that that doesn't apply to the total requirement. So I guess there's two parts to that question. In that slide, when it talks about the 100 acres, that would be in the annexed area, the annexed 600 acres areas, if that happened. Now, to answer kind of the other part of the question, under the development agreement, 199 acres has to be set aside for airport protection space. Of that 199 acres for airport protection, half of that is to be open space. And I don't know if that answers your question. There's also other-
It does not, I'm sorry. I, I guess what I'm trying to understand, I know the development agreement requires them to have a certain amount of open space. Are they going to be able to take credit for some of that open space on the donated land or any of the land? Like, what, let's assume the comprehensive agreement with the annexation goes through, through, what is the remaining requirement that they would have for open space?
Under the comprehensive agreement, they would be, they wouldn't have to have any airport protection space anymore, because we'd be buying all that property-
Sure, that makes sense.
-or they'd be donating it. They're, they still have other open space requirements within the development agreement that wouldn't change one way or the other.
That, that answers my question. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I approach this as I approach how I manage my family. And, you know, there's always a prioritization. And where I'm netting out is that in the South Ranch, I, you know, I can't see us successfully selling a 0.95 sales increase, let alone the ongoing 0.75, while spending 10, 13, whatever million dollars and having this all go through with the voters. There's just, it's just, it's tough times for everybody right now. And so for me, honestly, police and fire is where I'm going to prioritize, number one. Number two, I do agree, the future of this airport depends on us getting the Embraer 175, is my, what?
Yeah, we're good, yeah.
Okay? That, that's the future of this airport. So I agree, whatever we need to acquire from the AED land, to whatever we have to do to extend the runway, not strengthen it, but extend it, to have that plane come in and take off in the next decade or so, is number two. Number three for me is the South Ranch, assuming we're on our own, because we're not going to play ball on everything they want. So if we have to buy everything in this, not just the, you know, not just what's down there, but what we have to, I prioritize zone, zone one and two for purchase. That's where the crashes have been. That's what we have to protect. Would I like to protect more? Yeah, but there comes the point where we have to go, if this is going to be a regional airport, the city of Prescott taxpayers and this council financially can't handle this all on our own. So I don't know if this is a, you know, what we have to do to develop a regional airport municipal authority, where we get some other skin in the game and some money coming from other communities who all benefit from having this be a successful airport operation. This is floating a lot of people's boats from an economic development standpoint. It even was in the most recent council chamber and county area. We, we can't keep carrying this all alone. We've got to work to having this become a regional airport. And so I don't want to buy all this land right now. I want to work on that as an option, and, and therefore, I hold off on zone, zone four. And I roll the dice, because I need to pass police and fire. That's where I'm coming from. That's how I can sleep with myself. That's how, if this was my family, those are my choices.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, that kind of begs the question, have we looked into creating a, I don't know, what, what do we call it, a regional taxing district for the airport? Or how, how does that work? Because, you know, I have said that, too. We talk a lot about regional cooperation, and we have really, you know, been able to shoulder the weight of the cost of this airport for way too long. And a lot of the other communities are benefiting from this airport. The other question I have, I, and I've asked the public, are you willing to give up the commercial air service at the airport? I have resoundingly gotten a no, where they don't want to give it up. I think we spent a lot of money towards it. And if we give it up, I think we have to pay back some of that money, or maybe even all of it, don't we? To the FAA, $62 million? If we were to give up the commercial air service? So I keep hearing this from people. It's like, "Well, just give it up." Well, I don't think that's even possible.
Well, it, it would depend on the project. So if you decided that you no longer wanted to be a, an airport in the national airspace through, through NPIUS, then FAA would say, "Well, you have a lot of grants that have been issued to the airport," and they, they would seek to get that repaid if you no longer wanted to be part of the national airspace.
Yeah. So it, it's not going to happen that way. But let me direct that same question back. So have we looked into a taxing district, number one? And have we asked the landowner at any point if he would be willing to hold those parcels that we eventually want to buy for any length of time with a letter of an intent or a first rights of refusal? I mean, somehow, if we can't afford this now, would he be willing to, I don't know, have we even asked that question to hold off on that? I guess maybe it's ridiculous, but I'm just asking.
No, I think it's a decent question. We haven't, based on direction from council, sought a right of first refusal. And I think that would be the route to go through. There would be a market value for that. And I don't think we've determined what that value would be, or asked the landowner what they would, if they'd be willing to do it. But I think if council directs that, that's something we can ask and see if there's something we can do there. As to your other question about a kind of a special taxing authority or an airport authority, we looked at it briefly in my office, enough to find two previous opinions. This was asked by councils, previous councils, twice. And so both times, we prepared kind of opinions on it. And I know that I sent it to Mr. Goodman. It's, the answer is, it's very difficult. There's limited ways we could do it, and we would really need either kind of voter approval to do so, and/or get the county and neighboring cities on board to do that first.
That's unfortunate, because again, how can we, are they going to step up on their own without being asked? I don't know. Nobody's ever asked the question. The other question, I don't know what you mean by, "It's very difficult." I'm assuming you've got to get a 100% buy-in from the other communities in order to participate in this. And, you know, again-
Yeah, meaning that, as it relates to airport authorities within the state of Arizona, it's covered primarily by former Air Force or military installations that then are converted into these airport authorities. So there's not a statutory mechanism to do it easily. That's the answer to, "It's difficult." So that kind of leaves cooperation with our neighboring jurisdictions. And I don't know if anybody wants to address that, but I, I don't think it's something that has sought much, gained much ground to this point.
Okay, I've got one last question. I'm sorry to take this up. And my ear is now open. Thank you. I don't know how that happened. So, Joe, and again, I've just talked to a few people that have airplanes, and I don't know if they know what they're talking about either. But is there an additional tax that we could tax people outside of our jurisdiction in order to use our airport? Do it legally? Is there, I guess something like that exists?
Yeah, I think Charlie or Kelly can speak to this more. And I think that would be through various landing fees and so forth. And I don't know if there's more we can do there. I think that's probably in their expertise.
Well, I'd like to know about that, and I'd like to know if it's worthwhile. I mean, I don't want to, you know, pick a scab if it's not, but if it's going to generate some good income, and we have every right to be able to do that.
Mayor Protam, I would say that a couple of things. I think that our fee structure, as it relates to landing fees, fuel, flowage fees, excuse me, so forth, is very competitive. So I don't think there's much of an opportunity. As it relates to our commercial service, we are allowed to provide, or airports are allowed to provide what's known as a passenger facility charge, which is $4.50 currently. I'd like to see it raised. It hasn't been raised in- As it relates to our commercial service, we are allowed to provide, or airports are allowed to provide what's known as a passenger facility charge, which is $4.50 currently. I'd like to see it raised. It hasn't been raised in over two decades. But we're part of the essential air service program. As currently the DOT, and I don't know the exact amount, but I want to say it's six, between a little more than north of $6 million we're receiving on an annual basis to subsidize our present level of air service. Until we get off of that, we're not, we're precluded from charging the passenger facility charges. So again, I feel like I'm Debbie Downer here, but we're very limited on our ability to add additional taxes or fees of some sort to try to offset these costs at this point in time.
Thank you. I'm just trying to be creative and think outside of the box.
Oh, no, I appreciate that. We need that.
Thank you.
We need that.
Well, I know we have $6.1 million available to acquire land that is only allowed to be used to acquire land. So we could, we could tap into that funding source to acquire some of these critically located properties. I think when you look at this chart, when you're referencing a DWR donation, that would be based upon if we decide to advocate or, or go forward with that $10 million agreement. Is that right?
That's right, but the numbers are the numbers. So this would be the total cost. So this was easy to show what it would look like as an example, if there was an annexation and some of that, that tan color would be donated. But if there's not an annexation, then it, that would be purchased at those same prices, roughly. Those are estimate.
Yeah, I did too. As, well, I looked at parcel two and three that came up to 6.2 and we have 6.1 available and those are in zone two. And then looking at the donated parcels, which would be six, four, five and eight, that would cover the high-risk areas. But we just can't accept those as being donated unless we accepted the entire offer. Is that correct?
Right, that's right.
Otherwise, we'd have to actually acquire those.
Right.
And then if you added those back in, then we'd have that higher number. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, again, I was looking at zone one and zone two in the South Ranch, assuming that they were not going to donate anything because we were not going to agree to the terms of everything. And so therefore I was looking at parcel, parcel six, which is up at top in zone one, parcel four, that is in zone one, parcel three, that is in zone two, parcel five in zone two, and parcel seven in zone two. And those five parcels add up to 5, 4, 5, 5, 6, 5, 0. And then if you consider $3 million for AED, you're up to about 8.5 million and that still leaves some money for airport operations. And that's the way I would run my family.
Well, keep in mind, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these parcels in zone one and two can't be developed anyway.
The parcel four, or six, sorry, I had a hard time seeing that. Parcel six, which you see is, has a low valuation of $73,000, that cannot be developed. Under our current agreement, no buildings can go in that parcel six. Parcels four, three, five, those are the ones that are, allow for civic uses and airport identified one civic use in particular that was inappropriate being churches. So that's what we're talking about. But you're right, in parcel six, it cannot be developed in any way currently.
So the need to actually buy that is kind of offset by the fact that you can't develop it anyway. So why buy it, right?
So we're down to about 5.4 million for parcel four, three, five and seven, which are all in either zone one or zone two. And we've got $6 million to buy land.
So we got-
Now, that doesn't leave us the $3 million for AED, but we would be tapping into some of the other $10 million to buy the AED and then that leaves a little bit left over for airport operations.
Well, I think from my perspective, being able to use the acquisition of dollars available efficiently and not have to add substantial more allows us to at least have a justification for convincing the public to support our .95 for the public safety tax and the additional fire stations. Would you like to help us out with this, Mark?
I don't know if there'll be any help, but I also wanted to remind the council that you've already spent 8 million. So you've already spent 8 million of your 10 million.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'd like to go back to this 199 acres, open space, airport protection that was an ordinance that was passed along with the annexation. The prior airport director, Dr. Robin Sabata dug this up. And it's, it's, I don't know if it's vague or not, but if it says that 199 acres are going to be donated, aren't we going to hold the landowner to this? And can we apply that to what we're talking about today? And why can't we?
It will certainly apply to some of it. Now, there is some vagueness to it. I will tell you, there's no donation of 199 acres. There's 199 acres set aside for airport open space protection, of which half of that can be whatever, civic, and half of it is to be open space. But it's not to, none of it's to be donated.
So can we apply that to this, to this acquisition?
We don't get to choose where it's applied. But some of that area certainly, almost certainly would be part of the open space areas, just by a matter of what's been developed. But that applies on both the north and south side of the runway, 199 acres and then 99.
So, so basically that development agreement, we subordinated all our rights as a city to the, to the landowner and the master plan.
Yeah, we left unclear where the 99 acres would be out of the 199. And that was just something we didn't take care of at the time.
Well, I tell you, I'm flummoxed. I'm not really sure how we can proceed and at what level and what parcels and where, and how that would potentially impact our ability to convince the public to support the public safety .95 tax proposal. You know, we're, this is extremely complicated for our long-term financial stability in So Mark, that eight, 8 million that we've already spent, is that going to apply to some of this 6.1 million that we've been granted for land acquisition?
The money's going to have to come from somewhere. I believe the appraised value on it was 6 million, so up to 6 million of it is eligible for reimbursement through the grant. So 2 million is going to have to come from the general fund already on that 8 million?
So in essence, this 6.1 million that we've been kicking around here has already been spent.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to be sure to mention that.
Yeah, that's right. That's a kind of a crucial point, isn't it?
Well, that was on one of the early slides that the airport had up today.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I see the landowner's attorney, Mr. Polk is here. I would like to invite Mr. Polk to come up and say some words and maybe help us out a little bit. Maybe he has some ideas and can help us problem solve.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Stephen Polk. I'm the attorney for Depot Ranch and the James Family Foundation. And the James Family Foundation ultimately is the owner of these parcels. Thank you for inviting me up here to speak, Councilmember Rusing. I think it was the mayor who said just a second ago, well, this leaves me flummoxed. And I'll tell you that we are flummoxed too at this point. You know, going back on the comments about is it possible to, to delay a decision to ask the landowners to voluntarily wait? That already happened. You know, it was, it was March of 2022, over two years ago, when we all met in the old city hall in the basement and this conversation started. And there was a request and I said, please, it's all vacant land right now. We know you have subdivision plots in front of us. Please hold off on those. Please hold off on development. We need to figure this out. And we all agreed in good faith at that time to figure that out. That was March of 2022. Michael Lamar was the city manager. That was before Joe Young. That was, you know, different council members, right? That was, so it's been two years where, where there hasn't been any development at all. And if you ask, you know, if you wait another two years, you can't reasonably expect that it'll still be empty vacant land. So that changes the whole equation, right? That changes the numbers. I, I do want you to, you know, I think Joe Young presented nicely on the proposal that we thought we had a handshake deal on back in November of last year was 10 million to acquire all that for you. That'd be a discount of $3.5 million over the appraised value by your appraisers for that, for that land. And then you would annex the 600 acres. Right, I've heard concerns from council members about the annexation. You know, I'll say on that one, I have the utmost respect for, for what you do as, as council members, right? You're up here making the hard decisions and you're weighing the different factors. But we thought we had a really good proposal in front of you that really prevents, that prevents sprawl, that, you know, there's no new homes are added for this land. We already have the water entitlements. We already are allowed to build the 10,500 homes. So when we were talking about moving this development away from the airport, you know, that really came from the former airport director, Robin Sabata. That was her, and there were a couple of reasons to do that. The one was because the aircraft fly circular training patterns. You know, most of the noise around this airport is Embry-Riddle training traffic. And so for noise reasons, it made sense to move development north, farther north. It also benefits, one thing I haven't heard today yet is the, the YRMC North Campus parcel. The hospital owns 120 acres just north of the airport there. You know, they have plans, they want to develop a medical campus out there. That'll serve the Prescott community and all of northern Yowapay County. But that requires homes and development to come in. That requires help on the infrastructure. And so this proposal to do the annexation was something they're excited about because that helps them be able to implement and actually build a medical campus out there. Without that annexation and with, you know, the actions, that 8 million acquisition from Chamberlain to, to establish that land in perpetuity as open space north of the airport, you know, that really sets them back in terms of their ability to build a medical campus out there. So that's certainly something to take into consideration. You know, I think city attorney Young brought this up, but it's, you know, Arizona law requires the city council as the first step for starting a condemnation to make a written offer to purchase at the appraised value. You know, we started this process two years ago. You ordered appraisals, that was September of 2022. It was June of 2000, or July of 2023, when the final appraisals came in. Certainly no written appraisal to, certainly no written offer has been made to purchase for appraised value. So that's something, a decision needs to be made. You know, see, you're right, you have to make a decision as a city council, weighing different priorities. If you want to buy this or condemn it, you got to make the decision now or go back to the way things were, right? You know, so I, unfortunately, I don't have a whole lot of real solutions for you other than it, it costs money here. You know, it's, it's cheaper today than it'll be in the future, right? Again, you know, we voluntarily, I shouldn't say voluntarily, but it's been, it's been two years where nothing's been developed out there. It's still vacant land. You know, we're, we're flummoxed on our side too, saying, we don't want to submit subdivision proposals. We don't want to start putting in houses here when you guys are raising concerns, right? You know, I think on public safety, I do, I do want to remind city council that it was about a year and a half ago today, we all sat down. Airport director Robin Sabata said there's, there's one key public safety issue I'm highly concerned about right now. It's, this master plan allows you to build schools within this area. I really don't think you should ever be allowed to build schools. You know, and, and the James family, they voluntarily relinquished that, right? The city, the city didn't pay them anything. They didn't give any consideration at all. But that master plan was voluntarily amended to protect that. So no schools will, will ever be constructed in those areas identified by the airport director. You know, I've heard really good comments today. I think you need to make a decision, but submit a written offer for appraised value or, you know, I'd encourage you to think about the annexation again. I really thought that was a good win-win solution. Again, we already have the land use entitlements to build the, those houses out there. And so it's just moving it farther north. In terms of open space, if there's 1,800 acres to build the 10,500 homes, or now you have 600 more acres are annexed, but you still can only build 10,500 homes? In essence, you're, you're preventing the growth of Prescott, right? That's, it's another 600 acres where no new homes can essentially be created. But again, we think there's good reasons for the annexation. And it was the airport director who really came to us and asked for the annexation. And on that topic, you know, it was also, the city came to us and said, hey, we need to look at acquiring this land. Please don't build anything. That was over two years ago. And so it's really, I think decisions need to be made now. And I'd encourage you to take a hard look at one of those two options that were, that were proposed, presented to you today. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, thank you for your comments. And I was in the room. That was like I'd been on city council for five minutes. And, you know, and I did see the conversation there, but the intent was different in the beginning than the way it is today. And, you know, I'm not necessarily against personally the annexation, especially for what you said. You started out with 10,500 homes, you're going to end up with 10,500 homes. Here's the shopping list I have a little problem with though. And I, and I've asked to have this quantified because I do think it has to be fair, fair to, to the taxpayer. You know, we're all up here, we're representing our taxpayers. So I'm going to just read this list. It's, it's right here. The city to reimburse for costs of streets through the acquired property. Deepwell Ranch allowed to use 27 acres for parking, parks and drainage. The city weighs the annexation costs. Significant liquidated damages, I'm not really sure what that means. The master plan, and then 100 acres of the annexed property to be open space. We, we're already, I thought, according to the original DA, supposed to have 199. But what I'm asking is, other than or above and beyond the 600 acres of being annexed, we've had all these asks. There's a quantifiable price to these asks. What are they? I'd like to know that. Because again, as a representative for the taxpayer, if we're, if we're trading apples and apples, that's one thing. If, if I, if I'm giving, you know, if you're giving, throwing me a rotten apple and I'm giving you a pile of gold, that's another thing. We've got to be able to go to our taxpayers and the people that represent us and say, we got the best, most fair deal that we could get. Nobody wants to be in this situation. I would like to make you whole. I understand that. But we've got to be able to work this thing out with actual real numbers. That's the way I feel about it. Instead of having the laundry list of things above and beyond the annexation. So if, if we can get a little more clarity and we can get a little, you know, maybe some numbers attached to these asks, I would be much happier in making this decision. One of the things I do want to point out, one of the, the pros, if you will, if there's a pro in any of this, is the fact that you haven't changed the, the initial amount of homes. Because the, the way we benefit as a city is the tax that comes out of people building those homes. I'm not, I really don't want to give up those homes that we're going to be taking out of these properties here that we would like to buy. I'd like to remain at the 10,500 homes. But again, it's all the additional asks that the taxpayer has to come out of pocket for that I'd like to know what those numbers really are. I was told by a realtor that the, I think it was a realtor, that just through the sheer annexation, that's almost an $11 million give to Deepwell Ranch in terms of all these other things. other things. So, if that's true, I'd like to see it and see what these other things are going to potentially cost us. But if we can just get it on, you know, get it in paper somehow with numbers attached to it, what it's going to cost the taxpayer, what you're giving up, if anything, and make sure that it is apples and apples and not something that's unfair to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I'll just respond quickly, that we have done some aggregating of information for what the cost would be depending on, on the solution or the option that council proceeds with. So, cost of annexation, cost of sewer, cost of water. We have compiled those. Happy to, if you want, I can speak to some of them now, but we do have most of that information, if I'm understanding what the request is.
All right, we're getting close to the end of this meeting, but I have a feeling there's probably a few members of the councils like to hear that information. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right, please proceed.
It won't take too long. So, speaking to the utilities, sewer estimated cost, 6.4 million. Extension of water, about 3 million. Again, those could be charged through impact fees and recovered over time. It would take quite a bit of time, but they could be recovered over time. Annexation, 25,000, that's simply for the process, the fees, the application, the process. Other planning and zoning fees, about 23,000. In the agreement, cattle fencing was in there. I looked to Joe Baines, who's not in the room now, but we've crunched that number. That's not tipping the needle any direction, I'll tell you. It's, I don't have that in front of me, but that's not the biggest dollar amount. And then there was also a request in a previous negotiated agreement for improving the master plan path and trail. We're currently crunching those numbers. Again, I don't expect that to be the largest of these numbers in these categories either.
So, based on that, just those numbers alone, and including the $11 million in value of taking that property over, am I, am I right in that, that we're, we're going to be over $23 million, close to it?
The question is, and I think I'll just state it plainly, it's cheaper for the city to agree to the annexation, except for the water and sewer infrastructure, which makes it more expensive.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. To the extent that the purpose of this meeting is to provide direction, and I appreciate, Mr. Polk, what you've, you kind of brought. I think, I know it's been two years in the making to kind of continue to have these conversations and these discussions, and I'm sorry to disappoint you, Mr. Polk, but I'm not in favor of either option. They, from a fiscal policy perspective, that just doesn't make sense to me. And I, I can't with a good conscience go and face voters and ask them to do what is the very necessary funding to police and fire, and at the same time, spend money on land acquisition that will tie up entitlements that will, as the airport director put very succinctly today, drive up more expenditure from the general fund to fund capital improvements at the airport. There's just, this is exactly the scenario when I talk to people about this tax increase that they're afraid of. They're afraid of that we will use a tax increase and then use increased general funding to go and do other things. Now, granted, in their scenarios, typically, they're imagining us buying open space, but this is another use that frankly, I don't think, my fiscal responsibility won't square with this because it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I was against the purchase on the north side. I'm against this purchase. The only one that has made sense for me that I voted for was CVID, and that's because the dirt was worth more than the land. You know, the AED one, given the priority around the runway expansion, I would be interested in moving forward with that one. But I would want to know that, how are we, how are we going to make it work? You know, this money we already spent on the north side, we had to subsidize that to the $2 million, it sounds like. I mean, we are out of money, and the financial reality is hitting the fan right now, and we need to be good stewards of this, or we're going to be, we're going to be even in a worse place, and it's going to hurt the thing that is the biggest priority for me, that makes it easy for me to sleep with myself at night, which is police and fire.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Being part of the healthcare community, I support the hospital 100%. I support the campus here in Prescott. I support the campus in Prescott Valley. It serves our community well. But I resent the hospital being leveraged in this case to extract money out of us. If the hospital didn't do their due diligence, I'm sorry, they need to own that. And in my personal opinion, a campus out there makes no sense at the end of our crosswind runway. It's what, a quarter of a mile away from the crosswind runway? It's going to have so much overflights. If the hospital truly wanted to serve the community, they would build that campus in Chino Valley and serve that area, because those people are so underserved, and they're always having to drive into town. So, I would like to just ask you one question. Would the property owner be interested in maybe carrying the note personally and loaning us the money, and we could pay him back over time? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rusing. I'll say, at one point earlier in the discussions, that was a proposal that was offered, that was on the table. I don't know about now. If there's a desire from council to make a written offer for appraised value and request to carry a note on that, I'd, I'd suggest that you guys make that written offer and follow through with that process.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Stephen. Can I call you that, Mr. Polk? Okay. See, that's the kind of creative thinking that we're going to have to do to get ourselves out of this jam. One of the other, and I would love to explore that. But the other thing, Mark, can you, we talked about selling the W and some city properties and other things that would go towards this. What is the status of, and what is the value of the W parcel? Which, for the public that's listening and doesn't know, it's a piece of land that the city purchased that's at the beginning of the runway, I guess, where they touched down?
It's at the east end of the runway, and on the north and south side of the runway. It's on both.
It's a piece of property that the city owns that we actually asked our city manager, Katie Gregory, to put on the market to sell. And that was going to generate quite a bit of money. How much was that? Do you remember?
I know what we paid for it. I can't tell you what it's worth. I doubt they're the same number. I believe we have about 1.9 million left, no, what is it, 8-point? We sold a portion of it to the FedEx facility.
It was about 1.3 or 1.6.
That we sold.
That we sold to FedEx.
So, it's about 9 million. I can get you the exact number when I get back to my desk. About $9 million that we still have in the remaining acreage out there. Whether it's worth that or not is a question for the market. It's not subdivided. It doesn't have through the fence agreement as it sets. You know, there's a lot of things that will impact the value of that property.
But hypothetically, if, if, and you know, this is hypothetical, if it's, if the value comes back at close to nine, and we can get that on the market and sell it, that money could go towards these land purchases.
It's general fund money. It could go for whatever council wanted to go for, whether that's a new fire station or whether it's land purchase around the airport. Again, the 9 million we're talking about is not the value of it, it's the cost of it. I don't know what the value of it is.
Okay, but what year did we buy that? I mean, theoretically, things have gone up. Has it been a while?
It has not been very long, but it was not really an appraised value at the time. It was a negotiated value.
I'm sorry?
It was 2020, but it was a negotiated value. It wasn't necessarily the value at the time.
Okay. But I think we did already, just in a, didn't we direct the city manager at the time to sell that, put it on the market? And then we were, we had, I thought we had agreed in that meeting that we were going to use that money for the purchase of some of this land.
I don't believe I was part of the meeting. So, if, I have not received that direction personally. But of course, happy to take the direction from council.
Well, I am curious, just, a CMA is free, a comparative market analysis. If we could get a CMA of that land that's left and find out and maybe look back at the minutes, because my memory, if my memory serves me, we were going to allot that, and we had directed the city manager at the time to put that on the market.
So, the direction from council during that executive session was to have staff look into the option to potentially sell the W parcel and what that would entail. There was no direction about where the money specifically would go.
Okay, thank you. I would like to just get a CMA. We have a realtor on staff. They can run that pretty easily. And I know they're not always 100% accurate, but we can get close enough to figure that out too, if we're looking for funding sources. And is there any other, Mark or Tyler, anybody can come up with any other city properties or things that we could sell in order to fund some of this?
Most of the significant city properties we have are part of our water fund, and any sale of those funds would have to be used in the water fund for water resources. And also, they impact our ability to pump. A lot of those properties have water rights associated with them, so they're really not available for sale.
Mark, you're such a creative guy with money. Can you think of any other avenue? You don't have to answer me now. Answer us all at another meeting, another time.
Okay.
Well, I don't know where we are now. I don't think we've really been able to give you much direction here.
You're correct, Mayor.
Mayor, you do have a public comment. I don't know if you'd like to take that.
Yeah, let's, please, I'll please take that, yes.
Sherry.
Okay, thank you. And, boy, this has all been so mind-boggling, I don't even know where to start. I just want to go back and just correct me if I'm wrong, back in 2017, 2018, when place, subdevelopments were annexed in, correct? That was the 22,000 homes. Was that right, projected? How much? 10,000, okay. So, we're all talking about safety here. We're talking about the safety of the airport. We're talking about housing and businesses around the safety of the airport. So, when, back in that time, when this development was annexed into the city, when you're annexed into the city, that entitles you to police and fire protection from the city of Prescott. That's a safety issue. So, when that was done, at that time, arrangements should have been made with our police and fire, because they will be entitled to those services. So, obviously, it wasn't done. So, six years forward to where we are now, where we've seen all this growth, not, and, you know, I just want to say, I've known Ron and Laura James for many, many years. Kids grew up together. No one has done, that family, the James family, has contributed to this community, to the youth in our community, like the James family have, other than probably Jim and Linda Lee and Mike Fan, have all contributed, given back to our community. So, as we see a more of the, the James family, Deepwell Ranch, they've, they've got a portion already started that are, people are living in there. We see, we're talking about more area now, possibly the 600 acres being annexed in. We've got Prescott Lakes, they're starting their phase, if you noticed out there, building their other phase coming in. Yabai Hills, I think, has one more phase to be built out. These are all in the city. So, back in March, March 26, Chief Bonney and Chief DeRay came to the city council. That's who they are under. That's who oversees them. And they made their plea, because they've seen over the years the growth, and they haven't been able to keep up, and they've been asked to do more with less. So, with the presentation from Mr. Whitfield and the council all coming together, realizing the best plan to bring our police and fire forward to be where we need to be with the growth now that's happened over that, where we are now, and the future growth, the decision was made to go forward. The best way to do that would be to go forward with a 0.95%, 2% of that sun setting in 10 years, with the 0.75% going on in perpetuity to give them operation costs for our police and fire. So, prioritizing, we want to prioritize. They've been the longest since that first development back in, or developments in 2018 were allowed to be annexed into the city. That should have been the point where we looked at our police and fire also. So, I appreciate everything. I know this is a lot. We've got a lot on the table, but our police and fire are stressed, they're overworked, they're stressed, they can't keep up. And for public safety, that, for the citizens of Prescott, I'm just saying, that should be, and I appreciate those of you that have said that, they're our first priority. So, thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Please, Lois, go ahead. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. If I go back to the $8 million purchase for the land because of the engineering mistakes, so we had to buy Zone 2 and Zone 3 on the north ranch, you know, I'm sitting here flummoxed that that's 8 million of the 10 million. I thought that we were going to be potentially, highly likely being part of a lawsuit against that engineering firm, and some of that money would come back. And so, I haven't gotten an update. Is that, am I thinking about that right? Is there still hope on that front, or is the 8 million gone? And I'm really mad I voted that way.
We are in a lawsuit with Louis Berger Company regarding their master plan they created. The master plan for Depot Ranch was based off of the Louis Berger master plan. We have a lawsuit going currently with them. In terms of highly likely, I don't think I've ever used the word highly likely on our chances for success on this lawsuit, but we are going forward on it.
So, somewhat likely.
Possible.
Spoken like a true barrister. Well, you know, I think we've investigated all these options pretty thoroughly today. I wish we had more direct advice to be able to proceed, but we still have some additional information that we're going to need before we proceed. So, all I can say is, this meeting's adjourned.